Is already on.
There we go.
Ross, okay, I'll call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. First item is roll call. Elzon.
Here.
Michael Kane.
Here.
So Southern.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
Kevin.
Here.
So we have all our members at present, we have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is public hearings. We have a public hearing for zoning text amendment. Short-term rentals with the secretary reading the announcement.
Notice is hereby given that the following public hearing will be held on Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven P. M. in Community Room Two, Town Hall Annex, one three four Groton Long Point Road, and virtually via the Zoom platform to hear the following. Zoning Regulation Amendment, R E G twenty-three zero 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 one, Text Amendment Two, One, Add New Short-Term Rental Definition in Section two point one, Two, Add New Section five point one dash seven point C, Short-Term Rental, and Three, Amend Section four point one Table of Permitted Uses to Add Short-Term Rental. Town of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission, applicant. A Zoom link will be posted to the town's website meeting calendar. Applications are on file and available for public inspection during normal business hours at the Planning Department, one three four Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, zero six three four zero, and at the Office of the Groton Town Clerk, forty-five Fort Hill Road, Groton, Connecticut. The proposed draft zoning regulations can also be viewed at the town website under Department's Planning Development Pending Applications. All persons having interest in the applications are invited to attend, comment, and provide testimony and evidence dated this twenty-ninth day of December, two thousand and twenty-three, at Groton, Connecticut.
Thanks, Phil. So the conduct of the hearing will consist of a summary by the town staff first, and then we'll open up to any comments from the public. And you address the commission. There's no debating among each other or anything, just address us. And then we'll take any comments we get from people that are on the internet. So if Deb, you want to summarize?
Sure.
The
Sure.
Change.
Before I get
Close change.
Before I get started, I just want to remind the commission to speak into your microphones when you do speak for the recording. Thank you. So Deb Jones, I'm the Assistant Director, Planning and Development Services. As you know, this application was submitted by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Since two thousand and twenty-one, the commission has heard a number of comments about both the benefits and the impacts of short-term rentals. And the commission worked with the Horsley Witten Group Consulting Firm out of Providence to draft this text. The proposed text amendment defines short-term rentals, adds the term to the table of permitted uses, and defines a process to regulate them. If adopted, it will apply only to the town, not to the city, not to Noank, not to Groton Long Point. So to summarize what the text amendment is, so short-term rentals would be defined as the use of a furnished legal dwelling unit in whole or in part, providing transient lodging to the general public for compensation for a period of thirty days or less. Short-term rentals would not be allowed in the R S zone, which is a single-unit residential zone, the I G zone, which is heavy industrial, the W W, which is the working waterfront, G R or G C, those are the open space green zones. They would be allowed with site plan approval, provided certain conditions are met, in the C N, which is neighborhood commercial, the C R, which is a regional commercial, and I M, mixed-use industrial. A special permit and site plan approval would be required for short-term rentals in the R, which is a residential zone that allows one and two-unit dwellings, the R U, which is a rural residential zone, and the R M, which is a multi-unit residential. It would also, those items would also be required in the mixed-use zones, the M D D, which is downtown Mystic, the M T C, downtown Groton, and the M V C, the Paquonic Bridge Neighborhood. So limitations will be placed on the number of short-term rentals per lot in the residential zones, and the owner or long-term lessee would be required to have their primary residence in a dwelling unit on that lot. There's also requirements for parking, lighting, noise, and temporary events. If adopted, these regulations would apply to new short-term rentals. So your packet for tonight's meeting included the draft text, legal ad, the executive summary from the two thousand and twenty-one housing market study, the town attorney's comments, a summary of Whitty versus Zoning Board of Appeals, which is a case that's making its way to the Supreme Court, it's a beach community in Branford, the code enforcement officer's comments, D E E P's comments, staff report, Noank comments, and comments from Mr. Bradam. So as you can see from those items in your packet, the town attorney is concerned about establishing a number of pre-existing non-conforming uses. He's also concerned about the impact of this case that is going to the Supreme Court and what that might have if you choose to adopt this, the impact. Code enforcement officer is concerned about how short-term rentals in apartments or condominium associations would be handled, and what might constitute evidence of short-term rental activity. D E E P found that the amendment to be generally consistent with the Coastal Management Act. Additional comments were forwarded to you today from Will Gatz, Catherine Pratt, Attorney McCauser, Diane Glombosky, and Elizabeth Pendery. And you also have in front of you printed out additional information that Attorney McCauser submitted just maybe about an hour ago. All of these items are attached to the online agenda, so folks can see it. The additional information from Attorney McCauser will go up tomorrow. So as I noted, this is a commission-initiated application. The hearing can stake open as long as you deem necessary. If you decide to continue the hearing tonight, I would suggest that you continue it to the February thirteenth meeting because we have a number of site plans that will be placed on the next January meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I did receive a email late this afternoon from Rose Gordon, who lives on Fort Rachel Place. And to summarize it, she said, I would prefer that the existing zoning regulations are simply being enforced following Noank example. And I'll give you this for
Thank you. We'll get that up tomorrow.
Yeah, but attaching it to the So open the meeting to comments from anybody in the public that wishes to address the commission tonight. If you'd raise your hand, I'll recognize you. And when you speak, come up to the podium and speak into the microphone, which can detach with your name and address. That's so we can have the recording, which we have to have for a transcript later on. So start, start in the first row, if you want to raise your
Elizabeth Pendry, eighty-three High Street.
But yeah, make sure you can
Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah, because they also, people are
Oh, sure. Well, okay. I want to commend
You can take that off too, if you want. See.
All right. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. I want to commend the Groton Planning and Zoning Commission for constructing a short-term rental text amendment proposal that is a fair and reasonable first step in curtailing the proliferation of short-term rentals in our community. It will go far to protect our neighborhoods from the professional investors that have proliferated in southeastern Connecticut and beyond. The growing prevalence of short-term rentals poses significant challenges to our neighborhoods, housing affordability, and adherence to zoning regulations. They contribute to the housing crisis, burden our infrastructure and local ecology, accelerate gentrification, and aggregate wealth along racial lines. Concerning housing affordability, long-term housing costs are rising far faster than inflation. Studies find that high Airbnb density correlates with increased rents. Locals and new residents to our area are under financial strain when looking for and meeting the dizzying demands for housing. Groton needs more long-term housing, not less. Concerning zoning regulation violations, professional operators circumvent zoning laws that prohibit hotels from residential areas. This leads to increased externalities on local residents such as noise disturbances, safety concerns, and stress on neighborhood infrastructure, which are typically managed by enforcing regulations separate that separate hotels from residential areas. I am pleased and proud that Groton may soon be among the growing number of communities near and far, such as Noank, Greenport, Long Island, Brookline, Massachusetts, Burlington, Vermont, Honolulu, Aspen, and recently, New York City, that have banned or placed firm restrictions on short-term rentals. Concerning wealth disparity and ownership, Airbnb accelerates gentrification and aggregates wealth among racial lines. This wealth disparity in property ownership reinforces economic and racial inequalities within our community. To summarize, short-term rentals diminish available housing stock and exasperate the affordable housing crisis in our community. Short-term rentals burden our infrastructure, accelerate gentrification, and disproportionately displace lower-income, long-term residents. Given these pressing concerns, I am reassured that the Groton Planning and Zoning Commission has made a short-term rental proposal that is fair, practical, equitable to all stakeholders in our community, and I am thankful for the thoughtful effort they have put into this challenging task. Thank you very much.
So anyone else you want to speak?
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Rayzpec. I live at eighty-one Main Street. And I want to just briefly speak in strong support of the draft amendment to the regulations concerning short-term rentals. Want to commend the Planning and Zoning Commission for a very thoughtful and fair proposal for how to address this contentious issue of short-term rentals in Groton. Many, many citizens have already presented before this body the deleterious impact on neighborhoods that rampant short-term rentals are already having in Groton. Thank you for hearing us by curtailing short-term rentals in your draft. I strongly support your requirement that short-term rentals must be owner-occupied in residential neighborhoods. This is the only system that will work to limit short-term rentals unless Groton wants to get into an elaborate enforcement mechanism, complete with knocking on doors, serving infraction notices, and finding people, not an attractive prospect. I also support allowing only one short-term rental unit, oh, this isn't quite right, one parking space per bedroom, require one parking space for each bedroom. These requirements will naturally limit the number of short-term renters moving into neighborhoods. I live in Noank, where the zoning commission has disallowed any short-term rentals, even though many of us suggested that owner-occupied would be adequate. They were mindful of the headaches of enforcement, I believe, and decided to keep it simple. Some residents were very upset, but most are really enjoying the greater tranquility of the Noank neighborhoods. This proposed regulation is the right thing for the majority of our citizens. I applaud you in crafting a fair, reasonable plan for the future of short-term rentals in Groton.
Anyone else in the first? Okay, go down the row.
Thank you. My name is Mary Ellen Furlong, and I live at fifty-seven Fishtown Lane in Noank, Mystic, and Groton. I have just two points. I didn't really prepare anything for tonight. Number one, these short-term rentals are driving up the price of houses in town. Even without selling or buying, I saw my house was revalued for seventy thousand dollars higher than it was last time. That means that I'm paying a price already for the short-term rentals. And number two, and this is to me is a very important point, the idea of grandfathering everything out there as a short-term rental, when in the end, I will be paying to check these places, paying for more police, fire, the whole thing. And I really am very happy with what you are doing. Thank you.
Sunny, okay, go on.
Hello, Kathy Capero, thirteen Warren Ave. In the past, awareness has been made that S T Rs were not classified as hotels. However, all of you know the definition, but I'll say a hotel or motel is a building or buildings providing transient lodging to the general public for compensation with a daily cleaning service fee with or without meals or kitchen facilities. When someone stays in an S T R for one night, it appears our current zoning regulations are being violated. In a one-night stay, the cleaning service fee associated with S T Rs on platforms like Airbnb and VRBO would become a daily cleaning service, so they all require it. And all of the other criteria of the definition are met. Thereby, it appears when there is a one-night stay, they are by definition a hotel. And when considering this point, would a solution be to create a minimum two-night stay for S T Rs, so they are adhering to our current zoning laws? Thank you for your time.
Anyone else in the first row? How about the second row?
My name is Arnaud Bourgeois. I reside at thirteen Grammer Street. I have an issue with one of the newly proposed zoning requirements for short-term renters. I believe that your goal is to protect some of the neighborhoods and other real estate to be more available to local full-time residents, and I don't disagree with that. The principal point that I disagree with is restricting all short-term rental in residential zones close to downtown. I believe that short-term rental should be allowed as long as they are owner-occupied or where you own a property adjacent to yours, providing you are a full-time resident. By allowing only owner-occupied short-term rentals in the future, the current unmanaged and uncontrolled situation will not be worsen. I purchased my house in Mystic three years ago. The only way that we were able to move here full-time and be part of this beautiful community was to create a small short-term rental under my house that we call Riverbed. Without the potential for income, without the potential for income the basement studio could offer, we will not have been able to comfortably afford this property. We will most likely not have bought here in Mystic, and our home will certainly have been purchased by someone from other states and only occupied part-time. Instead, we are thrilled to be here full-time, and my wife and I enjoy and contribute to the community all year long. Additionally, I believe this restriction will also impact local young, local families who would like to settle here. Sometimes, having a small studio or even an extra bedroom that you can rent for a few days or a couple of weeks is just an income to help homeowners buy the house of their dreams. If the goal of this restriction is to encourage more full-time residents who contribute to our community, please reconsider the prohibition of owner-occupied as short-term rental. Thank you.
I have copies and also Jim Gordon, yeah, also I wanted to give you a letter, so we gave it to me, but it couldn't be tonight.
They give it to the staff and they'll get it to us. Anyone else in the second row wish to address us? Yes, if you want.
Good evening. Natalie Billing, fifteen Ashby Street, Mystic. I really have two comments, one of which is, if I understand correctly, and I think I just heard Ms. Jones say this, that the regulations you're considering adopting here would only apply to new short-term rentals, not to existing ones. And my question is, how will you know what the existing ones are? To the best of my knowledge, and you know, I could be wrong for sure, but to the best of my knowledge, the town has not undertaken a project to register existing short-term rentals. So I don't know how you're going to distinguish between existing and new. If you're just going to trust the word of the person running the short-term rental, so that's one question. If you realize that maybe the town first needs to figure out which short-term rentals are already operating and needs to develop a process, a registration process, then I just hope the Planning and Zoning Commission will work collaboratively with the town and allow them the time they may need to create that process so that going forward, there's a way to distinguish. That's one kind of general comment. My other general comment, I happen to live on a tiny street, walking distance to downtown Mystic. And there are at least one, probably two or three, short-term rentals operating on my street. It doesn't have any negative effect on me as a resident living on this tiny street. So I think I'm not as opposed to short-term rentals as some other people are. As someone who travels, I often stay in short-term rentals. It's just my husband and I, so we get a studio or a one-bedroom. We're not a problem in the neighborhood. I understand that probably if a house is a large four- or five-bedroom house, that could perhaps be more of a problem for the neighborhood. So I don't know if there's a way to look at the size of the unit and factor that in to what's allowed or not allowed. I also understand if any of these short-term rentals were my immediate neighbor, perhaps that would be more of an issue for me. In my case, none of them are. They're a few houses away. It's not been a problem for me. So I'll just go on record as saying I'm someone who's not as opposed to short-term rentals as some other people. But thank you for your work on this. I understand it's a very important issue and a very difficult and divisive issue in the community. People will have many different points of view. And I appreciate your serving and doing your best to try to come up with something that's in the best interest of the whole community. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in the second row wish to speak, address us tonight? Anyone in the back row wish to address the commission? Yes, if you want to come up.
Hello, my name is Ellen Elfring, and my husband and I reside at twenty-one Allen Street in Mystic. We own a short-term rental home. It's a three-bedroom, two-bath. We have a, we built a small cottage the town allowed us to do that we live in full-time. We've had the short-term rental since two thousand and nineteen. And we have had, and it's a, it's a successful short-term rental. We have neighbors on either side. We have neighbors across the street. It's a busy street. But we've had no complaints of noise. The police have never been called. We have a, before we lived here, we had a host who, or a manager who acted as kind of a host and would greet people and stuff like that, and address any issues if there were any. No incidents. I, I, I really appreciate everyone's opinion, and I appreciate that the town is doing what it can. It's very, it's a quagmire. I understand. I feel that there are certain things that are being put on the short-term rentals that have nothing really to do with short-term rentals. I think gentrification is not a short-term rental issue. It's a, it's a problem everywhere. It's a town issue. Infrastructure, I think that that is also a town issue. It's not just a specific short-term rental issue. The noise, to the best of my knowledge, there have not been many. I know of one in the last probably six months that was called of police being called to the short-term rental, not to ours, but to somebody else. I feel that the issue of driving up the real estate prices, our taxes have almost doubled. We're not happy about that either, but we also understand that we created something on our property, and we need to do our share. What's driving up prices is people moving out of cities, people moving to this beautiful community. And it's not pleasant to be paying more taxes and to be paying more of everything. But it's part of life and living in a beautiful place. I feel that there's possibly a few bad apples that have created an issue for everyone else who really abides. Like, I don't know of any corporations that own S T Rs. It could be. But all the hosts that I know, and we have a really great community that we all talk and communicate, I feel like people want to do the right thing, and financially, it is something that people need in their lives. It's long-term rentals is an issue that is, again, another, it's a bigger problem than short-term rentals. I feel that short-term rentals, I'm not opposed to some kind of guidelines around it. I think that might be helpful. But I feel that people who rent, we've rented a lot of short-term rentals when we travel abroad and domestically, and it supports the community. It offers, I often get so many responses and feedback from our guests that this would not be possible. We can be here as a family. They're in a room, they're in a house, it's an open layout, they can cook together, they can have barbecues in the backyard. They understand the noise restrictions at certain hours and the light restrictions and the parking restrictions. But I, I feel that it really supports the community. So anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much for your time and looking into it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the back row wish to address us? Anyone that's standing up or sitting down in the other chairs? My okay?
Hi, Will Gatz from forty-five Pearl Street. I think there's a couple of real differences for short-term rentals. And one is the tenant's turnover quickly. You don't have tenant issues. We have currently had two hundred and twenty-two guests at our S T R on Pearl Street. at our STR on Pearl Street. It's owner-occupied. We live there. We have zero complaints from neighbors. So I also feel that, you know, the, there's a lot of overblown discussion here about the evils of STRs. And I think, you know, when we look at STRs, the advantage to the property owner is that the rent is higher. In a month with STR, you might get twice as much as you would for a long-term rental. And you don't have tenant issues. It's kind of a no-brainer, really. And so when you look at the proposition of taking away that right in residential areas for future homeowners, the, the argument that you're doing it to increase housing availability for the big employers, that's puzzling. Are we saying that you're going to exercise power to limit the rights of homeowners to the advantage of EB? It's just puzzling. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address us? Anyone online, if you wish to address this, raise your hand and we'll be recognized. In your order, I guess, go down the order if you want. So Bruce first.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to thank the commission for putting these common sense regulations into a draft form. I think it's going to help our neighborhoods and our quality of life. I understand that short-term rentals are a big deal for those who have them because they make a lot of money from them. So I'm certainly sympathetic to that particular way to go, but if you have a short-term rental right next to you, as I do, and they have sixteen people there and they're coming to town and they want to have a good time and they're out on their decks and at all hours of the night, no, I don't wish that on anybody. So it is a problem. I'm not convinced with the town attorney's arguments with regard to how he feels about our definitions of short-term rentals at all. I think he's corrupted the very meaning and intent of our current zoning laws. And we have to proceed from there because they're not being enforced in any way. I would hope that with some of these regulations going forward, that we can put them into effect. If you need to make some minor adjustments, fine. I mean, that's the purpose of this meeting and the fact that it's a draft. But I really feel that the, the job of government, the main focus of government is to protect the citizens. And really, when you're talking about residential zoning, what are we trying to protect ourselves from? And that's the encroachment of commercial interests. And I'd like to see that continue so that we can, we can have that protection and provide quality of life that we don't have now. And I would, again, like to thank you for putting this together. And let's see what happens. We'll go forward. Thank you.
Can I do that? There you go. Okay, thanks. All right, Richard, you can mute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, we own property next to Harp and Hound.
Can you state your name?
Richard.
Address.
Yeah, Richard Dixon. We live in Old Mystic, fifteen Route twenty-seven. We own property in Pearl Street next to the Harp and Hound. And we've used it, it's been used for short-term rentals since before we purchased the property. And we use it sometimes for short-term rentals, sometimes for long-term rentals. And I can tell you, we've had many more problems with the long-term rentals that are there than we have with the short-term rentals. I think one of the issues that we're dealing with is sometimes you get good people, sometimes you don't. I think having a registration, having some regulations on short-term is, is good sense. But we're trying to do some kind of a balance here between the neighbors that maybe are concerned more than the actual reality of it from time to time about any rental property. So I know it's a tough nut to crack, but I do want you to make sure that you are mindful of those people who are using short-term rentals to help defray their high taxes. But other than that, think about the people who want to come to Mystic. As, as one woman said a few moments ago, families like to come. We're a, a, a place where people like to visit. Turn it around the other way. When I travel, I like very much to be able to stay in bed and breakfast or short-term rentals if I'm taking my family. And I think we need to, to be mindful of that as well. I am concerned about requiring it only to be if it's somebody who's a resident there already. I think that you can have regulations where there is a manager who can manage it. And that's an appropriate way. You do need to have contact. We have a property right next to us. I didn't know for, for quite some time that they were doing short-term rentals until I ran into the owner. And there's been no problem. This is up on Route twenty-seven. It's zero problems whatsoever. And so again, you, you have to be careful not to make a draconian regulation because there are a few incidents of where somebody might have had a party that they shouldn't have. But that happens in private residences. I would bet that there's been more people, police calls to private residences for parties than there have been in short-term rentals. So again, regulations are, a registration is useful. It's important. Somebody has to be able to go take care of things if there's a problem, but don't overdo it. It's like throwing the baby out with the bathwater. You, you can come up with a good regulation that doesn't impinge on the needs of the people who have invested in the property, whether they're a corporation or somebody who just likes once in a while to come up and visit here and rent it out the rest of the time. That's really not the issue. It's, it is the issue of being able to provide for our community across the board. And I'm including those that want to come to this wonderful place we call Mystic and be able to have a nice place where they can stay with their families. So again, I, I'm not opposed to regulation, but I am concerned that overregulation is going to create an additional set of problems that are unnecessary. So thank you very much. Again, my, my experience has been both long-term and short-term, and we've had many more problems with our long-term renters on Sixth Pearl Street. So thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yep, there you go.
Yep.
All right, this is the letter that I wrote that our node had handed out to the committee.
Would you state, would you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Jeff Gordon. I live at one thirty-four Edgcombe Street. As a resident of Mystic, I appreciate and respect your efforts to craft regulations that address the challenges associated with the emerging use of residential properties for short-term rentals. As a current owner-operator of multiple short-term rentals in the town of Groton, I am grateful to know my properties will fall into the category pre-existing non-conforming use. I do take issue, however, with your intention to ban future STRs, including owner-occupied STRs in some residential zones. A homeowner should be free to rent space in the property they occupy for any length of time. This piece of proposed regulations is unnecessarily draconian and was not sought after even by the organized opponents of short-term rentals in Groton. Furthermore, it is counterintuitive to ban future STRs outright in the RS zones which skew toward the neighborhoods which are walkable to downtown Mystic, our region's tourist hub, and to potentially permit them in RRU and RM zones which typically are not associated with tourist traffic. Why not allow permitted use with conditions or special permit in all residential zones, especially the neighborhoods closest to where most out-of-town guests want to be? One final comment. Not too long ago, Mystic was a tourist town in a rut. But over the past decade, downtown Mystic has experienced a renaissance that most associate with the opening of world-class restaurants like Oyster Club, Via Emilia, and others. It should come as no surprise that this restaurant boom coincided with the emergence of Airbnb and VRBO. There are many more customers sprinkled throughout the town than there used to be, all of them shopping, eating breakfast, lunch, and dinner at local restaurants. Ours is a fragile tourist ecosystem. Please tinker with it carefully. Thank you.
Good evening. Do you, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, my name is Edward McCauser. I live at forty-eight West Eldican Avenue in Groton. I, I submitted a couple of written statements earlier to you. I, I actually represent, among others, Bruce McDermott, who spoke earlier, and I just wanted to make a couple of points and one that I think is very important. On behalf of Mr. McDermott, I've been trying to get to the bottom of the opinion that our town attorney and our zoning official have that STRs are allowed under our current zoning. I think that's not correct. And I've been, you know, pursuing a freedom of information claim, you know, with the town of Groton to find out what documents support that opinion. That's ongoing. My primary point is that currently, there's a case before the State Supreme Court. It's called, I think you might have heard of it earlier, Weeby versus Pine Orchards Association. That case is going to decide whether short-term rentals are allowed uses in residential areas. It's currently on the docket for the Supreme Court between February fifth and the sixteenth. It'll be argued then and there'll be a decision. And I think it's very important that before we enact any regulations, we, we, we understand whether or not short-term rentals are in allowed use in the residential area. My opinion is they are not. But the one opinion that's really going to matter is our State Supreme Court, which is going to establish the law with respect to short-term rentals. And I think it would, you know, currently, the regulations that you're, you're looking at are based on the assumption that existing short-term rentals are allowed. I think that before any regulations are actually enacted, we should know exactly what the law is with respect to short-term rentals in residential areas. I believe that they're not allowed. I, I've looked at some of the briefs in Groton, and it's true, and I think Pine Orchard as well. There's a provision in the zoning that says if some, if a use is not expressly permitted, it is prohibited. I believe that's the case with short-term rentals in residential areas. However, my opinion again is not what's going to matter. And I think it's really important that you know, the regulations that are enacted reflect what the actual law is. And we should know sometime this spring, I hope, that with a decision in Weeby, what that law is. So I urge you to take in all the information you can, but probably if in fact Weeby says that they're not permitted in this, in a residential area, you probably want to reconsider the regulations that would apply in that case. Right now, we have regulations that are assuming they're allowed. So again, I just urge you to not enact anything until we really know what the law is in the state of Connecticut. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Maria.
Hello, how are you? Can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
My name is Maria Bell. I am one of the managers for, we own five properties in, between Groton and Mystic. We haven't really had any complaints short-term rentals. If anything, we brought more business into beautiful towns. I've worked in Mystic prior to this. I worked at the Mystic Biner and it's a beautiful town. I do think that maybe regulations should be put in place, but not to hurt the businesses as a Airbnb or any other short-term rentals. I think if anything, we're bringing so much more than just a rental. We have so many, I mean, even jobs that we've created between cleaners and plumbers and managers. And if anything, I think it's, it's doing more good than bad. Thank you.
Would you just straight, your, state your address, please?
One of our properties is on
No, your address.
My address, I live in Weathersteel.
Your address. I still need your address.
Just for the properties?
No, just your home address or where you're working out of.
On Mill Street in Weathersteel.
Thank you. Stop moving. There we go. Oh, what's it? It keeps shifting. Sorry. All right. Steve, we're getting to you. Hold on a second. All right, Stephen Young, you can try now.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Young. I own fifty-two Pearl Street. We, we've owned it for
Would you state, state your address?
Yes, fifty-two Pearl Street in Mystic, Connecticut. And we've owned, we've owned fifty-two Pearl for nearly fourteen years. And we have been renting our home out. We have not rented it out for about two years. And before that, we have been renting out with S, STRs for approximately seven years. Our, our, our neighbors, one of our many neighbors is, is against the concept of STRs and has not supported our vision for our property there. Besides that neighbor, we have not had one complaint over the years. We, we own, by the way, this is the only property we own and operate or rent out whatsoever regarding STR. So it's the only property we own in Connecticut. And we currently do not call fifty-two Pearl Street our full-time home. We are primarily summer residents and, and we are there on, on, on weekends when kids' sports activities allow us to, to go down, you know, to go down. So I, I echo what a, a previous, previous gentleman said on, on, on Pearl Street as well. And and also I would add that as an, as an architect, I, I believe homes are designed to be used. I, I really do. I don't think a summer house that gets used for three or four weeks a year and otherwise remains vacant is good for any kind of vitality of a town or is good for neighbors. I, I feel that, I feel that I feel that it's, it's a, it's a, it's, like I said, I feel like homes are designed to be used. And I feel that it's for the betterment of the town. I love walking for the betterment of the town. I love walking to Sift Bakery from our home and, and talking to customers, whether they're from New York or Massachusetts or Lyme. These, these RS districts where this proposed change is going to happen or, or is being considered. Um, these are, these are where the people, as stated before, these people want to walk to lunch. They want to get a coffee. They want to talk to people. They, and this has been the lifeline of, of Mystic. We, we have the benefit of hindsight with, with Google leaving, with Pfizer leaving, with many of these, many of these corporations. Mystic is a, and I, and, and it's a historic gem. My wife and I got married there. It will forever be in our heart. But Mystic has, Mystic's current resurgence has been due to it being a tourist town. And I hate to use that word, but people want to be involved. They want to walk to dinner. They want to rent a boat for the day. They wanna, they wanna take their boat to Napa Tree for the day and come back for dinner. And this is what, this is how people engage in a town. And these homes, ours built in the mid eighteen hundreds, were designed for this. They were designed for entertaining. They were designed for walking downtown. And, and, and homes should be used. This creates, this creates a massive amount of revenue for the town. I know this because I see what percentage of a, of a renters' fees goes towards this, this town's hotel tax. And I would just absolutely urge the board to consider what is the difference between a long-term renter, say a six-month renter or a twelve-month renter having a party till two or three in the morning and a, a short-term renter having a party that late, which we have never had. These, these landlords can, can screen. And so we have a strict no, no party policy. We have no weddings. We have no rehearsal dinners. We, we maximize the number of occupants in our home. We set a max limit to that and we charge a lot, frankly. And this is, this has maintained a boutique status of, of our home. And we, we feel that our home is a boutique A-plus property and that we feel that we attract boutique A-plus um, renters who want to walk. We have a three-night minimum and people want to walk downtown and grab dinner and that's who we cater to. And I think that's part of why we're all attracted to Mystic is the, the traffic. And by that I mean the pedestrian traffic. So I, I, I agree with regulations as long as they're not too um, overreaching. And I just wanted to just thank the commission for their time in reviewing this touchy subject and you know, I, I'm, I, I'm, I'm not a Airbnb operator by any means. Our, our daughter was born while living in this house and this has provided a wonderful opportunity for us to maintain the home both from a architectural and construction standpoint, but also frankly, from a financial standpoint. So I, I just wanted to thank the commission. I, I, I'm done now and, and and urge you to consider the downtown pedestrian aspect of these SDRs and how that helps Mystic in particular. So thank you.
That's, that's it for online.
Something just, someone just popped up. Did someone else want to speak that raised their hands?
Is there more people down?
She's the right bar, right?
Yeah, you gotta go down the list.
I think she un, unclicked though. Come on.
Yeah, but
Yeah, she's not, Linda's not on there. Usually it pops up, up the top.
You're seeing the whole list.
Yeah, I can see, cause it'll show up, it'll show up. Um, they moved up to the top when they raised their hand. Okay.
Oh, they do. Okay. Does anyone else uh, wants to speak to us? Yes. We don't have that. I don't know that we really need it, do we? But it sounds like he's out of town then.
No farther than Boston. That's where he's an architect.
Does anyone on the commission with, making any or have any concerns with the proposal that, that significant ones?
Well, there's other things that we want to say before we close the hearing that we will want to discuss.
Yes, well, we, yeah, we can discuss minor changes right then.
I, I, once the hearing is closed, it shouldn't be discussing during the hearing.
So, no, I don't want a discussion, but to ra- raise the issue of things that we'd like to discuss in case someone wants to talk about it.
Yeah, that's Right, but just don't engage in the discussion.
Major, I mean, major things, intent, that would be, change the intent.
No, no, just that's, one of the things that was brought up was about with understanding is that about excluding the uh, the RS zone. I mean, say it's a valid concern. I don't know what to do without it, but we can't discuss it yet, but that's well, I want to let them know that we hear that and there's, and there's definitely an issue. But that's, that's what I mentioned, mentioned that.
Well, what we're really talking, I think with the change, the way we see it, we're only talking about new app or the new short-term rentals, non-existing ones to, right.
So that's, that's all we're empowered to do.
Right.
It's all we're empowered.
That's our understanding.
So if we want the town to then advance and go farther, we don't necessarily want them to do the exact same thing, if that's not what we want. The only thing that I, uh, and I had mentioned that, oh, sorry. It, I had mentioned in our previous meeting was the inclusion of that word less E that we had.
Yeah, but can you speak in?
I just wanted to, uh, when we have a conversation about the use of the word less E that we had included at, at the, one of the last iterations of the regulations.
Did that, did that make it?
Anyone else?
Yes.
Um, just I guess a couple, a couple of things. I know one thing that came up a long time ago when we were talking about all this was basically um, and having been involved in the zoning commission before planning and zoning. To me, in fact, short-term rentals were not allowable in the zoning regulations and therefore as was said by Attorney McCauser and others. If they're not in there, you know, then they're not allowed. Um, and there's very clear language for that in my opinion. So, um, but nonetheless, we moved forward, understanding that what we were doing would be something that will be effective for all short-term rentals to come. And given the, you know, the public input and all from many, many meetings and I would, I don't even know how much, how many people from the public spoke, but it was probably uh, it was a large number and it was really good to hear everybody's uh, feedback on that. Um, I think I'm comfortable with what we're doing on that, so.
Um, I did just want a clarification. Did the less E wording?
That is in the, that is in the draft.
That is in the draft, okay. Alright. Um, yeah, anything that I have, I think will be under discussion.
Yeah.
The same, mine will be under discussion.
Yeah. So you think we should?
It, it, so your options are you can, you can close the hearing, you can continue it to another date if you think that there will be more public input that you would want to receive. Um, again, you know, this is commission-initiated uh, amendment. There are no deadlines here.
Yeah, but I, I, I think we've gotten the basic issues or concerns of the public have been identified. So it would be
It's up to you.
I don't know that there'd be new, new things. The court case could change, but that's
And, and again, there's no deadline for making a decision for closing the hearing. So you could close the hearing, postpone your decision until that, that court case is decided, whatever, whatever you choose to do. You're not constrained by time.
I have a question for that. Maybe you can answer. Is that the way I see it, if, if court says, oh no, under current zoning, SDRs are permitted. Okay, if we come up with this, we said, okay, fine, but we're putting limitations on them. That wouldn't blanket say you're not allowed to limit them, right?
Right, right. But you might want to reconsider, you know, how you've worded things based on, on the decision.
Alright, cause I see it the other way around too. If they say, oh no, they're not permitted. And they said, okay, that's fine. We're permitting them in some places for the economic reasons that were just stated. So either, either way.
But again, you might want to look at the language.
The language.
This is the language that is proposed in this application. So you can't make major changes to it um, without withdrawing it and submitting a new
Okay, so the language might need to be tweaked, even if we want to keep all the features more or less the way they are, just because of what the baseline is. Does that uh, does closing the public hearing limit us? Then we would not be able to have conversations regarding if we, if there were changes that were
So, so if you, if you close the hear, if you close the hearing, you know, you can start your discussions. You can, can wait to make a decision. You can make a decision right away. Um, but what you, what you can't do is make significant changes to this regulation. Because this is the regulation that folks have reviewed and what they've commented on. So if there's you know, some typos, some grammatical stuff, sure. But if you're making big changes to the definition or to where, what zones these things are allowed in, then, then you would need to either, you'd need to withdraw this application and then submit a new one.
Right, and have another public
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, that's fine.
It, it's, you know, the basic intent, it's the intent.
Yeah.
That's right. It's, it's a matter of fairness. You know, this is what the public has reviewed. Right.
I suppose worst case scenario, if we say, oh, turns out we do want to make a change. So we have another hearing. Everyone's already talked this almost to death at this point. And if they know what the tweaks are. So I don't think it would be, starting from square one, it would just be saying, here's the change to our change we want to proceed. And we'd have this crowd back again. It would be okay.
I think we have enough information to be able to address it and make the, in, among our, to close a public hearing and then make the decision, do we go with it, what's there? Or not?
I think so.
So I'll make a motion then to close the uh, the public hearing.
I would second that.
Any discussion on the motion? So we'll vote on on the motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any? So the motion is carried unanimously. Okay, and then consideration of a public hearing. We can just I don't know what the feeling is with the commission.
Yeah, you've gotten some new information, certainly some new written.
I'd rather consider it
Really consider what you've, what you've heard and
And we move this to the February thirteenth?
Sure, sure. I mean, the hearing's closed, so we'll put it on that agenda. Okay.
And then we have time to digest everything tonight.
Okay.
Cause I'd rather not rush through it in this.
I agree.
Especially given we're still getting information.
Yes.
A lot of information. Yep. I might have a chance to look at.
Are we gonna not have any discussion on this tonight?
Right.
Okay. I just thought that some of the comments and everything are fresh in our minds.
Well, we'll get them on the, I hope we'll
Yeah, I think, I think what I'll do is, is summarize the comments that you've received.
Well, we also have a tape.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You can always review the tape. Exactly.
But if we have the minutes or, or a summary available for
For the February meeting, sure.
I think that would be worthwhile.
Okay.
Well, I think we almost need to consider all the comments that were made when you think about how many months, you know?
Yeah.
And uh, there was really so much, so very interesting comments. I think it'd be good for me to do a refresh. You know, I think we have
I think we might even need to have a checklist. I mean, if you were fin- finishing up a project, make sure all, all the comments are addressed and be able to just go say, yeah, we addressed it, we rejected, we rejected, we accepted it, whatever it was, you know?
Yeah, I tried to go through that with that, the written ones that we had received already. To try to understand, but that would be, yes, you're right.
So I, I thought um, Steph, when you um, opened, um, you, you provided a summary of what our legal representation for the town of Groton, kind of a macro type of approach. There were some other legal information provided here this evening and the pending state Supreme Court um, type of decision. I don't feel like we, we've adequately, the, our legal representation has adequately spoken to that in any way. I'd love a deeper perspective from our lawyers, far as that's concerned. And the reason, one of the reasons is having been involved in massive issues in law from FTC and SEC. We rarely wait for something that may take place because you don't know what the conditions are going to be, right? We shouldn't wait if we feel we were confident in our approach. But that also is a legal type of basis as far as it's concerned. So if you could provide that um, that in any way, from a timing standpoint, whether we should be waiting for Weeby versus um, Branford?
No, it's a beach community.
Oh, Pine Orchard, sorry. Right, I knew that. I, I loved his opinion on that. So
Okay, that's fine.
Be great.
Yep. If he wants
Yeah, no, I agree. Yeah.
But some of this, the court case may be addressing just their, the beach association's rules.
Yeah, it might. You don't know what conditions.
They may not apply to the state.
Sorry.
It's fine. I, I was just thinking that you're an alternate. Yeah. So, right, so discussions should probably just be limited to the regular members. Sorry, yeah, but, but
Please remove my comment.
Very good.
Heard nothing.
Thank you, Hal. The kind words.
Well, he's not addressing
No, that's fine. That's fine. I know.
I don't think it's, how are we doing? This kind of
Do we ask? Can I ask? That, to have those lawyers?
Absolutely. Yes, you can. And that's what the minutes will reflect.
Yeah. And also, um, I would like to have some com, that newsletter that we got.
Yes.
Because there were some things in there that didn't make any sense to me.
I can, I can give you I'm sorry, I, I can give you the, the actual case. And I'll, I'll include that in the February packet. It was just, it's just many, many pages and
Yeah, no, in that synopsis, it said something about um, that uh, if it was a family, they could
I, I know, it was confusing.
We don't regulate families, right? We regulate the use. And it, so it didn't, I don't know where that was coming from.
I, I think it wasn't, it could be a poor interpretation.
Yeah.
Cause I've had problems understanding those right up. I didn't think they're very well
Yeah, I mean, I saw that and I was like, oh my god.
Yeah, I'll get you the, the case.
Start, you know?
Thank you.
Cause the case is so specific to this. But I, I mean, we we don't have a definition, except if we put it in there, what a short-term rental is.
Right. Yeah, that's, that makes no difference. Okay.
Alright. Moving down, uh, new applications. No, I'm sorry, we got, we got back to our public communication.
There you go, yeah.
Public communications. I was looking at this, no, no things there. Does anyone on the commission have any public communications or communications?
Do, Mr. Chairman, do, do we need a motion to, have we moved it to the the decision to the February meeting officially?
No, you're just, you're essentially tabling the discussion until that meeting.
Okay.
Um, if, if you're continuing the public hearing, you would have to have a motion to continue it.
Okay, just so that the public knows that nothing's going to happen next month. It's going to be February.
Next meeting.
Well, that's where we started.
Yep. Yep. Right.
Yes. Public commu, public communications. And does anyone on the commission have anything? I did uh, receive something from Gretchen Chiferini and she wanted to go over with her to look at the wall construction on Triton, was it Triton?
Right.
Square or whatever. That, which I did go over. And the wall was being repaid, was being under construction. And according to the people on site, they reported that they were following all the rules of Gretchen's satisfactions. There was a lot of activity actually that day. And that was done between uh this Christmas and New Year's. The staff have any?
No.
And I guess, is anyone in the public would have any communications? All right.
Okay.
Then we go to new business, new applications.
None.
Have any referrals? We have two ZBA referrals. The first one is twenty Pearl Street.
Right, so this one is um a request to vary setbacks so that a garage can be expanded.
Does anyone have any concerns?
I guess.
I have no concern.
Yeah, the question, um, all these on the Pearl Street, isn't there some design review, some historic commissioner?
Oh, 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 absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, if you can see it.
Has that already been done?
You know, there's there's no requirement for which comes first.
Okay.
So.
So we could do, or they.
ZBA can take action on it, right, exactly, and HSC could decide something else.
Well, they have to meet the historic.
They do.
They have to meet.
They do. Oh, that, right, both. Yep.
Does anyone have any concern with the garage? Those changes are all important. Except they were extending, but I don't see that logic to me. I didn't like it.
No.
It was built in it's like nineteen ten or something, but when the car, seventy years ago, the cars wouldn't fit either.
No, but then you have self parking cars. That's how my brother sold his small garage.
Did he? But when you buy.
But you know what you're getting when you buy a house.
I know.
And you know the rules. But I figured it's more a other commissions would.
Yes. Then we have the one on two between two and Forest Pearl Street to combine those two buildings.
Right, so this is a a variance to increase the coverage.
Right.
Um. The idea is they're going to merge the lots, put on a small addition to connect the buildings. Um, right now, both of the buildings on both the individual lots exceed the coverage. Um, and this will also exceed coverage, so they're they're asking for variance.
But it exceeds by more, that's why I have.
Yeah.
That's right, that's right.
Fills in a useless wedge.
And the and the purpose of short term rental. Skinny people.
Yeah, the the bar extends their kitchen into the.
Oh, yeah, everything makes sense about it.
I don't know.
Sure.
But from outside vision, it doesn't.
It looked.
You wouldn't even know the.
No.
No.
There's already a gate there.
Does anyone have any concerns with that?
I had a lot of concerns, but there again, I'm glad it's, to me, it was more there's some design issues and things too. And the fact that you end up with bigger coverage from from individual ones that are already over the coverage. I had a concern with that. But let's see what the ZBA does.
Okay. Next, we have a election of officers.
Keep everything the same.
So we have crew officers. Chairman and.
Go for it, Mike.
I would, I would, I I. Jeff, I think you do a great job, and I really appreciate it, and I would nominate Jeff Perchard and.
Second that.
Job.
Thank you.
We want to put Hal on that.
As secretary. One one uh motion, calling vice chair. Vice chair.
Vice chair and secretary.
So as an alternate, can I vote on that?
You can't vote, but you can talk.
I'm not saying a word.
Some data being lost.
Does anyone have any other nominations? Is that a motion to? It is a second.
I second it.
Motion. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried.
Are you willing to accept this?
I guess. Otherwise, I'll resign.
Why didn't know that?
What?
That's my move up?
I'm not ready.
You can be here next week.
We need you, Jeff. Because we don't.
That's why I'm chewing you in.
I need all the uh extra pay I can pay.
Yes.
Get time.
Absolutely.
Or double time.
Double time on the third meeting.
Zoning Regulation Amendment.
So so this is, yeah, in front of you, you have the colored track changes version um in your packet. It was just all black, and so I think this is easier easier to read. So this is a a text amendment to amend the way you regulate group childcare home. Um, something that um will be consistent with recent legislation right now. Um, family daycares that are six and less kids, um, there's they're just permitted in, there's there's no site plan approval, there's there's no anything. Um, and I I guess in order to increase the availability of childcare, the the state passed regulation or laws that say, you know, planning and zoning commissions can't do um can't regulate uh group daycares um any more than they do family. So again, no site plan approval if it is in a residential house in a residential zone. So that's that's what this text um text uh reflects basically.
It just removes the previous restriction.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. Um, so these conditions would still apply if it is not located in a residential dwelling, you'd still be able to get site plan approval. Because in some in some residential areas, you know, there are there are commercial, either preexisting commercial or or allowed commercial buildings. And if there's a group daycare there, then you can you can regulate it.
The definition of group childcare is what?
It is, hang on. It is.
Should look at that myself.
Is that the size?
It is size, and it and it comes from state statute, all the child. Defining.
So a lot of the, a lot of what we were regulating anyway were probably state regulations.
A a lot of it is, yeah, exactly, exactly. Okay, so. So, all right, yep. Childcare facility consists consisting of a private home which offers or provides a program of supplementary care to not less than seven nor more than twelve related or unrelated children on a regular basis for part of the twenty four hours in one or more days of the week. Which is operated either as for profit or nonprofit business and licensed by the state of Connecticut in accordance with general statute seventeen B dash seven three three. And any other applicable regulation statutes or ordinances. This includes preschools, learning centers, and any other such use registered with state per statutes noted above.
That's under the title group childcare? Okay.
Yep.
So you could have twelve children.
Right.
Is that right? You have twelve children, your own children, and you could have it be a.
Exactly.
That's interesting.
Yeah, in 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 a home, in a residential dwelling, yeah.
That is, any impact to the uh table of permitted uses?
No, you know, I thought about that too, but we didn't, there was no way to amend the table, um, so to make it make sense. Um, so that's why I proposed the language here that, so it's a conditional use in the table, okay? And so when you go and it references this section, so you go to this section and it says if you're in a residential house, it's allowed by right.
Anyone have any concerns?
Okay, so we're going to wait until we get done with short term rentals and we'll we'll submit this as a as a next amendment.
Then we have uh commission reports. Report of uh Chair did sign off uh drawings for the aquatic plains park lighting. And and also for the, some offsite uh changes for central hall that was behind uh thirty six West Main Street in the parking lot area.
You just, you just signed off on that lighting?
Yes.
Oh, it's already in place, isn't it?
Why, yes, it is.
Yes, why, yes, it is.
Oh.
Looks very nice, but uh.
It is, we we caught them, so, and I didn't say say that. Um, so the biggest thing was the protection of the wetlands. Um, so prior to them starting the area of where the wetlands were, um, we were able to get the erosion and sediment control and and we actually had the and they submitted the plans at the same time. So we we had the, we actually had the plans in hand, they just weren't signed off, but yes.
Okay, report of commission.
And uh
Anyone have any?
Well, I guess.
Well, I think Sue and I attended the downtown mystic resiliency and sustainability on the plane presentation. You were there too, I didn't see that.
I sat.
Oh, okay.
Which was, I guess, no surprises, but uh you have to get deep into the report to see what it is they want us to do.
But one thing that I thought about afterwards, the spread water spray that works in the desert, it doesn't, isn't going to work in a high humid coastal area.
No.
Hmm? Would you already have high humidity?
There were some little funky, they're they're pushing the idea of having uh more rain gardens on the hill up above.
Right.
Which.
Well, the forty acres that drains into Pearl Street.
Right, so they, well, you say those words, but I don't know where you put those things, but I I I understand it. But it is just a delay, I suppose that's the idea. But for every place else a big rain, the problem here is not where the water goes, it manages to make it down into the bay, just, it's a sound very nicely, it saturates the soil and then we're doing almost the wrong, I I love rain gardens, and they're required for most building now. But it's just increasing the water table when you use it, but they do. So it's damned if you do and damned if you don't.
But I did see though, last time I was in Vermont, that they had a bad rainstorm this past summer. They did put one of these retention basins in.
Oh, yeah.
On Route Four, right next to the highway, I think to collect water, so it wouldn't overflow into the road.
Well, a lot of it has to do with slowing it down.
Yeah, that's what they're doing.
Which is, so I found surprising that it's a big deal in Oregon, of all places, where we have, that actually gets less quantity of rain than we get here.
Really?
Much, much less. But it just is, it's like always raining by comparison. But most of the parking lots that I had to design also had a slightly too small drain. And the idea was that the parking lot was allowed to fill up up to about eight inches, which won't ruin a car, and then drain much slowly. If it overflows, it overflows to the next section and the next section until it spills out.
It would act like a catch basin.
So it actually could catch basin, so the entire, so the entire parking lots, you see enormous parking lots with lots and lots of trees, and they're meant to catch the water up to
Yeah, surge flow.
Upset surge flow, they're all designed that way, so it's been around for thirty years. It was just, should have always been doing that. And I think in a lot of commercial things, they do, which is kind of quietly doing it.
Well, the check valves too, right? I mean, check valves have been around for a long.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sometimes it's just missing.
Yeah.
Did anybody catch in Yankee magazine, the uh pictures from Okemo that showed what people woke up to after those rains? I mean, people had boulders, I mean, they were three feet high, like in their entire property, and they were like I can't get out of my house.
Wow.
That was right at the end of my road.
This one picture, I, oh, bring it to.
Bring it, yeah, because that four feet was right at the end of our road, four to seven feet of water, amazing what happened.
Wow.
Oh, you were caught in.
We're up, we're up on a hill, so we're about two hundred yards above the one oh two, one oh three. But it's at the restaurant right at the bottom of our hill is called Sam's Steakhouse, you probably pass there.
Yes.
And that's what we had somewhere between four and seven feet against it, a good part of a day.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
I noticed they're closed.
Yeah, it's closed.
They're, yeah, they've been scrubbed.
Hillsides that are carved out.
Yeah, it's wild. Even on the mountain, there are.
Yeah.
And the market is still closed too.
Yeah, it's not open, Shaw's.
Yeah.
Yeah, Shaw's is still closed.
That's down on the ground.
Yeah.
Does anyone have anything else?
I have a little one, it's kind of a question, so what we we can do is that, back to the idea of lights.
Is that I just noticed that on the uh, at some point in the last year, the parking lot, building attached parking lot lights at the community center had been replaced. Given just replaced with horrible glaring horizontal beaming
Really?
LEDs, but they're they're put at forty five degree angle and they're just, they're the exact thing that we're trying not to have. They got. So if somebody's not got the word, we should, it should be the the best example of what we want to do, should be on our own building. If I could offer something now to so I thought at the end of the year, um, which I did not do my training until October, November, I thought the training that I went through was actually great, was really terrific. And I don't know whether we received Deb any additional guidance through your office or not. I'd love to be able to do it earlier in the year, maybe just spread it out, and I know there is a um added level or tier coming this year, that's what I at least understood from the calls that I was on. I'd love to get going on that, because I thought particularly on affordable housing, where I did not have a very good basis of information, I thought you did a really good job.
Yeah, so so you all have fulfilled your your training. Um, you'll have to do another four hours over the next two years. Um, and as those opportunities arise, we're certainly going to get them to you as soon as possible.
Sure. Seems like so so ridiculously little.
Yeah, does the cog give you some information on?
Yeah, we get it from a number of cogs, actually, it's virtual, you know, even on the other side of the state, you could take advantage of it.
Right, but what I I think too is a good idea is just, um, I think if the commission um sees training that is much more affordable housing, let's say that we're going to double up on, or something, I was getting really good on affordable housing. So at least we have a basis for some of our decisions, I'd love to see that as a objective this year. So.
Report of staff, you have an item?
Yep, we have a couple. Um, you want to go?
Sure. All right, so um as you are, you can all remember, um, there was a subdivision approval and a site plan approval for a car wash on Route Twelve.
Yes.
Located next to the uh Kia dealership, that that property got subdivided. Um, and the two, almost two and a half acres is going to become the new car wash. So um, the subdivision plans were approved back in February, um, and they were, they were basically signed and filed in land records. The site plan approval was in at the end of September, the milers have not been received yet, so therefore they're not filed. So it was a made aware right after New Year's on January second, um, from the building official that they had started site work down there. And so I went down there right away, and basically, the majority of the site had already been cleared. Um, there was a new track pad entrance on Pleasant Valley Parkway, uh, Pleasant Valley Road uh South, rather than Route Twelve. Um, if and you, and I have plans if you want to revisit them and whatnot, but basically the plan was to have the track pad entrance on Route Twelve. Um, they hadn't received the encroachment permit yet from DOT, um, so they went on Pleasant Valley South. Um, so um, all work was required to cease immediately. Um, and except for the installation of erosion and sediment control, which they did right away. So a couple outstanding items. First thing, obviously, I don't have the final milers, um, and it has to be filed in land records. Um, they never obtained, uh, they haven't submitted a performance bond for completion of the public improvements. There was never a preconstruction meeting, which we would have discussed all this. Um, and they needed an encroachment permit from uh DPW specifically to access the site from um Pleasant Valley Road South. And then finally, you know what we'd suggest is basically coming up with a revegetation plan for that for that western side, because now all of a sudden things have changed. So the question is right now, um, to the commission, is would the commission want the applicant to submit a site plan modification? Um, or can the updates be handled administratively by staff?
Well, I think administratively, because we know what their their, the end game is the same.
Yep.
Right, you, just how do you get there?
You're doing it, sounds like.
Yeah. We want to make sure and make you aware, yes.
Yeah.
And and they've been very receptive since that point, so um on. And, and they've been very receptive since that point, so um, on everything. So they have really followed up and obviously I'll continue to keep, keep them, I'll keep quite an eye on it, put it that way. So to make sure all these outstanding things are covered.
Very visible too, so.
Well, that's the thing, you know, and, and um, yeah, absolutely. It definitely is. So.
This isn't the same contractor that did the house on the. Ice House Lane right now.
I know.
Three hundred and thirty thousand. At three hundred and thirty thousand.
Wow, somebody has to tear all that stuff out.
And, but you get the bathroom and the kitchen, um, appliances and all the, uh, everything that goes with that.
Cause they already own all this stuff.
Somewhere, wherever it is, right? You get all that. Needs work.
So does anyone have any concerns?
Nope.
I'm doing it a minute.
So the, the, the plan hasn't changed. It's still the plan, but they're just accessing it.
It has to change.
Well, yeah, it has to change. So, so, so they're gonna have to, you know, show that, that new change, that that's gonna. And, and basically their argument was that, sorry, their argument was that. They were worried about the traffic on Route twelve and I questioned, well, why didn't you ask for an encroachment permit on Pleasant Valley South? That that was your, if that was your plan all along. And they're like, oh, we didn't know. So.
And, and they were supposed, they were not supposed to clear the entire site. They were supposed to leave a good deal of the vegetation in place. Such as it was. I mean, it, it was a fairly overgrown scraggly lot. But they just, they just went ahead and wholesale cleared the whole thing.
But I mean, when all is said and done, this thing gets built, access will be from twelve.
Yes, absolutely, yep.
But they're just working from.
Construction will work from that side and, and basically they, I'll have them, you know, come up with a revegetation plan for, for, for Pleasant Valley Road South. Because the, if you, you know, you probably, you may remember, you may not, um, it's a budding a residential area. And we had the requirement for, you know, buffers all in there, street trees and whatnot. Yes, exactly, yep.
Yep.
So the, the plan does have to change.
Yes, yeah.
Yep, but we can, if you're comfortable, we can do that.
Do that as an administrative change. Everybody.
Yep, okay, good, thank you.
So the zoning map in front of you is the latest, the one that you approved a couple of months ago. So that's, that's new, that's why that's there. We received word yesterday that the appeal of the fifty-five star street subdivision. The free lottery was withdrawn. Okay. So, so that's, that's done and settled and that they need to file those plans within ninety days and I guess they will be working on, on that.
What caused that to change?
Um, it was, there was negotiations between the, the owners and the folks who. We weren't party to it. Yeah. Um, and then, um. Want to let you know that, that Tabitha is no longer going to be with Planning and Development. Um, as of next Friday, she is going to Parks and Rec. To be the new manager of open space, open space and recreation, something like that. It's a bump up, um, it's, uh, she can use her landscape architect skills. I mean, yeah, so it's, it's a good, a good step for her.
She did a good job, so thank her.
Absolutely.
We don't see her.
Yeah, absolutely. So we'll be, we'll be advertising. Um, and then on the twenty-second, our new planning tech starts. So you'll start getting emails from a different person.
Very good. Congratulations on that.
Yeah, yeah, you know, people moving on and, and, yeah, improving their skills and finding better jobs. It's all good.
That's better if they stayed.
Yeah, it would be, but you know.
No, I mean, if they stay in the circle, which she did.
Yeah, exactly.
Stays in the same building.
No, she's not. Actually, she's gonna be back in your office, back at park maintenance. Yep.
Question on Zettis, what happened?
I only know what you guys know.
Do, did they run out of money?
I, I'm ser- seriously. Know what I saw on Facebook. I, yeah.
Was the owner in Calabina? Was it a new?
I don't, I don't think so. I think the property owner's from Austin Berry or something. Yeah.
Same owner.
Yeah.
Brothers, et cetera, the original. They always own the same building.
Speculation that he was gonna get out of the business and just lease his building. Maybe.
Maybe.
Put in another restaurant.
Yeah, somebody will take it right up.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. He's ready to go. Yeah. Anything else?
I, I don't have anything else.
Any, anybody have anything else? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So.